Good evening, can you hear me?
Hi, Val.
Hi Andy, hello everyone. Okay. We are ready to get going. Athena, are we reconvening the meeting from last week? Is that what it is?
No, this is a new meeting.
A new, okay.
New and separate meeting.
Okay, thank you. Is everybody ready? Okay, we'll get started then. Good evening, everyone, I'd like to call to order the Waltsford Education Meeting for Tuesday, August 31st, 2021, please stand for the flag salute. Mr. Smythe, we have the Sunshine Statement and roll call please.
Yes, this is the Waltsford Board of Education meeting, which the Open Public Meanings Act was provided by a notice to Star Asbury Park Press, Townsfolk's Office, all Waltsford Public Schools, and in the Board Administration Office on Order 26, 2021, I'll take a roll call, Mr. Garts.
He has an excused absence.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Ms. Hodnett?
Did you hear that here?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Mr. Krupa?
I'm here.
Mr. Nassar?
Here.
Mr. Sam Flipper?
Here.
Ms. Stites?
Here.
Mr. Wondrack?
Here.
Mr. Adnizia?
Here. All right, at this time, could I have a motion under number five to go into an executive session for letters A, G, and H?
Move, move it.
Motion, Mr. Krupa, could I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Sam Flipper, all in favor?
All right.
Everyone's in favor, we will be back at approximately 7:30 PM.
Mr. Adnizia?
Yes, sir.
I don't know, do we anticipate executive session being that long, I do not believe so.
No, it's not that long tonight.
Okay, so we can-
Just a few items.
Okay, so we can come right back out then?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Adnizia.
Okay, I apologize then, so we will be out as soon as our executive session is over, which we don't anticipate to go until 7:30. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Can someone change my name again? Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I had to restart my computer for the 100th time.
Mr. Clayton, could you make me a host, please? Thank you. We are waiting for Mr. San Filippo, I believe.
He's here.
Hi.
All right, we will, sorry. Okay, good evening. At this time, I will reconvene the Welltown Department of Education meeting for Tuesday, August 31st, 2021. Mr. Smythe, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Garts.
He is excused this evening.
Mr. Hall.
Here.
Ms. Haden.
Here.
Mr. Krupa. Thank you. Mr. Naster.
Here.
Mr. San Filippo.
Yeah.
Ms. Stites.
Here.
Mr. Mondrak.
Here.
And Mr. Adnizio.
Here. Thank you. Before we get going, I would like everyone just to take a moment of silence for the 13 American heroes that made the ultimate sacrifice this week. You know, protecting American lives. So just take a moment, please. Thank you. All right. Jump right ahead. President's report. I'd like to wish all the students and staff good luck this week as they start school. It's a very important week, first time, full day school since March of 2019. So we want to wish everybody good luck and hopefully it's the best year ever. Dr. Handerhand, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. The American Rescue Act requires school districts to publicly address specific items as they pertain to the LEA Plan for Safe Return to in-Person Instruction and Continuity of Service. The district is required to report updates to this plan every other month. The draft document has been posted under the COVID-19 tab on the district's website. The first item is universal and correct wearing of masks. The district will follow Executive Order 251, which requires the use of masks in school buildings. To ensure proper usage, the district nursing team will develop an updated video for the 2020-2022 school year. Physical distance is another area that needs to be addressed. The school will utilize social distancing to the greatest extent possible. Lunchtime practices will include dining in large spaces and spillover classrooms. The lunches at the secondary level may be grouped in lunchtime pods. Outdoor seating and/or tents will be provided and their use will be encouraged. With respect to handwashing and respiratory etiquette, alcohol-based hand sanitizer will once again be made available and the plans crafted in June will continue. Cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, including improved ventilation, will resemble practices from last year. These practices include, but are not limited to, increased installation of water bottle filling stations, student-accessible disinfectant wipes, regular cleaning of high-touch-point areas, disinfecting, filters changed quarterly, and the use of MERV 13, 10, and 8 filters. The ventilation units themselves will dictate the specific filter. With respect to contact tracing, the district must once again serve as an active contact tracing unit. The district will follow CDC and New Jersey Department of Health guidance at the time of the specific contact tracing. As previously indicated, the Ruvena app will not be in use this year. Parents are expected to screen their own students before reporting to school. Staff will be required to self-screen prior to the arrival at school. Vaccine resources will be made available on the district's website for parents and staff members. Students with disabilities will be addressed individually so as to meet individual needs. Specialized PPE is available as needed. This concludes the plan's update. On August 25th, I sent out a letter to families via email with a corresponding FAQ on the reopening of school. This letter is also available on the district's website. If you have not read the document, please do so. Last week, Governor Murphy signed Executive Order 253. It speaks to all public employees, including school employees. The executive order requires all districts, district employees to be vaccinated by October 18th, 2021, or participate in a weekly COVID-19 testing protocol. There is a great deal to unpack from these orders, and many logistics need to be considered. We have not received operational guidance yet from the NJ DOE. A system must be developed, one that prioritizes individuals' privacy. Policies must be created. Legal counsel must weigh in. As such, when an operational plan has crystallized, I will share this information with appropriate parties as soon as possible. I would like to take a moment to share some of my thoughts on the mask issue. This issue is clearly a polarizing one nationwide. It is clearly a complex and divisive issue in Wall Township. For the last few months, individuals that do not want masking in the schools have been quite vocal. Please know that I do hear you. And I also hear the messages I have received from families that see masking as a safeguard for their children and community, and that masks are a necessary tool to keep our students in school full-time. Regardless of point of view, I have to believe that both sides wish this was not even a concern. Personally, I would love to return to the way things were in 2019. I didn't realize how great of a year it truly was. I took it for granted. On August 6th, Governor Murphy signed Executive Order 251, which altered our own district plan. When I sent out this initial letter to families on August 3rd, I made decisions based on the health data I had at the time. Since then, our region has returned to the orange level of COVID activity again. Throughout the summer, I have been in contact with our local health department, and Wall Township has seen a noteworthy uptick in cases, including pediatric, in the last three weeks. Last year, I accepted this position, the position of Superintendent of Schools in Wall Township. As a superintendent of schools, I am obligated to uphold the law, including executive orders. As our board attorneys have advised and communicated at prior meetings, these executive orders aren't equal to the law and can only be removed by a judge, a court order, or by Governor Murphy, not by a Board of Education and not by a superintendent. That said, willfully disobeying executive orders jeopardizes the operation of this school district, your school district. Loss of state funding, revocation of educational certificates, and potential arrests of school personnel hurts this school district, and most importantly, it hurts the children of Wall Township, your children. Some members of this community continue to assert that I need to fight for the children of Wall Township. I contend that is exactly what I'm doing. I am fighting to provide a safe learning and teaching environment for the school community, and I am also fighting to keep our schools open for full-time in-person instruction. And I am fighting to maintain the wonderful extracurricular and athletic programs for Wall students. During the last 18 months, the children in Wall, across New Jersey, and across this country lost so much. The kids deserve a full-time education and the school activities they love. Despite a tremendous amount of time dedicated to pandemic management, some wonderful, wonderful things have been going on lately in the Wall Township Public School community. I am excited to share that 31 of our district elementary teachers participated in a full-day, week-long training for the Orton-Gillingham multi-sensory approach to teaching reading, writing, and spelling. This approach benefits every novice reader. However, it is the gold standard when working with students with reading difficulties, specifically dyslexia. Due to its diagnostic and prescriptive nature, the Orton-Gillingham multi-sensory approach will be a tremendous tool for district teachers in ascertaining levels of learning loss due to COVID in the elementary grades. Last week, we welcomed 24 new faculty members as they participated in new faculty orientation. I am thrilled to report on the enthusiasm I felt from all of the new educators. I would like to thank the administrators and staff charged with organizing and executing this very important school opening event. Earlier this month, nights in training took place at Wall Intermediate School. Nated was a wonderful event. Wall High School freshman orientation was a tremendous success, and kindergarten orientation at our four elementary schools was an absolute delight. I am very proud of all the administrators, faculty, and staff that were involved with planning these much-needed events. They serve as another step towards providing for an outstanding school year. Tomorrow, our faculty returns for the 2021-2022 school year, and we all will be welcoming the students back for what I believe will be an outstanding school year. I truly hope that this school year will exemplify the strength of the Wall Township community. I ask you to remember that we are stronger when we work together, and our kids deserve a united community. Thank you. Mr. Adnizio, back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Handerhand. All right. Don't have any Board of Education updates. We will move on to committee reports. Policy, Mr. Hall.
Okay, thanks, Ralph. Yeah, the policy, basically this month, we had a meeting on August 4th. Superintendent's office, all the board members were there, except Kristen, who attended virtually. Basically, we had a few. One of them was the Policy 3351, Healthy Workplace Environment. Basically, we had to change some words in it to to change from district administrative and teaching staff members to everybody that works in the school. So it was just kind of more of a language change. And also, we wanted to make sure that this policy gets out to all the new teachers and staff that comes into the building to make sure our schools are, you know, up to date on all the, you know, best practices when it comes to the healthy workplace environment. Policy 1643 was, excuse me, 1649 was family, federal families' first coronavirus response. That was abolished by law, so we abolished that officially here tonight. Policy 0131, the Bylaws, Policies and Regulations. We just basically, we're just, it's a name change of the policy. Instead of bylaws and policies, we added regulations. And it also allows us to abolish policies after one reading instead of two. We felt that abolishing a policy after one reading is sufficient. Policy 3134, Assignment of Extras Duties. This policy was discussed, but no changes were made at this time. We'll put that on the docket for another month. Policy 3142, the renewal of non-tenured teaching staff. The policy basically changes the language in regards to definition of what days are. And Dr. Handerhand explained to the group that there was some confusion in the past when you talked about days, how many days that you needed to give somebody if you weren't going to rehire them. If you said 10 days, was that 10 working days or 10 calendar days? So that kind of language was done to clean that up. Basically, the regulation of that policy was also just amended to carry out steps. And the non-renewal of non-tenured support staff was basically the exact same thing. Although this one was support staff, the other one was teaching staff. And then the last two policies, well, last policy and then a regulation was the Bridge Year Pilot Program. This mandated policy allows students to choose to participate in another year of high school for learning loss and extracurricular activities. It was provided by law of last year. Dr. Hander went through the policy and explained that some key components, such as students not being over the age of 19, and they have the ability to take nine or 12 credits after they theoretically graduate, and that they had to notify the district by February 15th of their senior year. So that would apply to graduating students that already graduated, seniors this year, and I believe juniors this year. And then the regulation of that 5460 was basically creating the steps necessary to be able to support that policy. So that was, that was kind of it for this month, Ralph. We had, there was a lot on there, but a lot of it was very very basic stuff. So nothing crazy to this month's report.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Hall. But the one thing I would like to clarify is that not all the board members were there. It was only the committee members, just so there's no confusion. It was just, yes.
I'm sorry. Yes, it was. When I read, when I read that, I, instead of going through all the names, I meant that everyone on the committee was there. Not, not everybody on the board was there. Correct. Right. And, yeah, yes, it was, just to be crystal clear, it was Dr. Handerhand, Brian, Ralph, Andy, myself, Ms. Keter, and Kristen, who attended virtually. That was, that was the participation in the meeting.
Perfect. Thank you. Personnel, Mr. San Filippo.
Um. Sorry about that. Andy, do you want to grab that? Because I was not able to attend the meeting, and Andy was there for me.
Yeah. Can you hear me, though?
You're low, Mr. Krupa.
I don't know what to do about that. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Andy.
Which is really low.
Just speak up a little bit. You're fine.
I had a question, Ralph, on the earlier report that that provision for allowing students to come back another year for a certain number of credits. Dr. Handerhand, is that still going to be taking effect this coming school year as well?
Um, yes, yes, it is. The Bridge Year Pilot Program, it will still be. And as far as we're, that we have been informed, it will, I believe this is the last year.
Okay. All right. And that deadline's February?
February, yes, the middle of February, February 15th.
Okay, thank you. That was all I had on that. Okay, so for personnel, yes, I was the alternate for Chris. One thing I have a question for you, Ralph, is the finance of facilities. Going to talk about the board doc program, because that went to all of the committee to eat the board docs by New Jersey School Board.
Yeah, it's, it's in the, in the minutes about that.
Right. So I don't have to say anything about that. All right. So now, right to the me, of the meeting for personnel. We had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Cranston, who's our new Director of Human Resources. And it was reported that he's in the fray, familiarizing himself with the district and the needs. We also had a discussion about the administrative responsibilities that were announced at a county superintendent meeting. Was that what it was, Dr. Handerhand? Was it a county meeting?
Yes, we were discussing with, obviously, there's been so much, so much concern coming, returning to school with respect to learning loss and also mental health needs. There's going to be great attention paid to how these items are, how these issues are addressed by the district, and they're ensuring that the, the federal and state money allocated for these purposes are used for such purposes. So they did tell us that there will be, you know, a great deal of accounting programmatically and corresponding finances with that. So they did let us know that it will be very much a focus moving forward over the next at least three years or so.
Right. And you're looking at developing a position to accomplish the goal as well as coordinating wellness and intervention efforts and services in this school district. And then finally, the committee was receptive and supportive of that, but comment was made that we'd like to have continual updates with regards to social emotional learning and mental health initiatives in the district. That would be inclusive of roles related to guidance, family liaison, counselors, et cetera. And that was pretty much the just of the personnel meeting. Did I miss anything?
Did a great job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krupa. Curriculum and instruction, right back to you.
Oh, okay. So we had three items, program evaluation, curriculum, writing process, and BARK, a reverse order, BARK, which is an internet safety service for schools as well as individuals at home. The district has looked at, has used this in the past, but based on what's considered best practice and some not not such good practices that the service was offering in terms of being able to protect privacy and a liability that was associated with that. We won't be continuing with BARK. We are going to look at using boots ground approach in terms of identifying needs in our student population. And there was a training that was completed, was it just by the administrators, Dr. Handerhand, or was it by additional staff?
Well, this, this summer, the summer training, it was the 12, the administrators, actually, all the administrators. And we also had some of our school's security officers in attendance. The mental health first aid is going to be offered during our October 11th. We'll have two sessions, two full-day sessions with mental health first aid, where some of our faculty and staff can be trained, and we will also be running workshops throughout the year. The intention, the intention is to really have everyone speaking the same language with, with respect to mental health and really what to do about it and how to act and how to act appropriately. And, you know, how to get people in touch with the best resources possible. There is also There is also plans to move forward with a mental health first aid for youth. So that, you know, that's, students are really the first line of defense with, you know, helping students, students helping students. And that's what we're looking for. And that's where, that's obviously something we want to strengthen within the district.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, please something, say something, right? And with regards to the other two program evaluation processes, something which, Dr. Randa, do you want to speak to that? And what your update is with regards to that process for school curriculum?
The program evaluation process is something that started in the mid nineties nationwide. That was well before standards and state assessments were available throughout the country. It's a very lengthy process. It requires teachers to be out of the classroom, do site visits to other schools, conduct researches, research on best practices, and analyze what the program is currently from a K-12 perspective. There has been movement that instead of doing this process, because it was written at a time before there were state standards and state assessments, that program evaluations be streamlined to include sort of either, either a K-five or a middle school or a high school and streamline it a bit. So I had this conversation with our principals and with our supervisors. We are going to take the policy or the practice that has been very lengthy, and we're going to tweak it so it's more accommodating. So we don't have to have such a large group and taking such a very, very long time to do this process and hopefully be able to streamline it in the ways that CUSAC expects us to. In the same line, we're looking at the curriculum writing process. Every August, the State Department sends out a CUSAC manual on what are the elements of a curriculum writing document and what it should be included for those people who are going to be evaluated in CUSAC. Although we may not be evaluated in for another year or two, it does let us look at our process and look at it, analyze it, and begin to look how we can tweak it so that we can also be ready for the CUSAC evaluation in advance. Both of these processes include the administrators and teachers, which we will come up with a process throughout the year. And by the spring, we will have something in place so the curriculum writing could be done over the summer.
That's going to help with greater consistency staff access to input on curriculum development from what my notes say here. So appreciate that. And I do want to mention that my previous district did away with program evaluations as well for the same reason. So were there any things that were missed from the committee notes that any of the other members want to mention? Okay, that's it, Ralph.
Thank you, Mr. Krupa. Anybody have any questions? No? Okay, I see none. We will move on to finance and facilities. Adam, did, did you want to take that or you want me to?
Yeah, I can take that.
Okay, thank you.
So on the third of August, we met, the committee met together over at the high school. This was the first meeting of our new format where we want to do monthly meetings in all the buildings. The, what we're doing is we want to have a discussion with the administration in each building as we go through possible referendum projects or just capital projects in general. Getting an understanding and seeing on the ground the conditions that are out there, I think are very good. And it's something that, I'm a hands-on visual person. I know a lot of the people in the committee and the board and and the general public are, are going to want to see what we're doing. They're very visual, tangible. So we want to get eyes, we want to get input from everybody. So we start at the high school. From the, the high school, after we got done talking to the administration, we spoke with Mr. Hingham, the technology director, about what some of the needs are, both on the backend and the front end of our technology infrastructure. Looking at investments, and there's details within the report about how, how to improve it, how to pay for it. It's going to be a large project, just like all our other capital projects. So more news will be coming in the future. And then every month, we look at our school due reports, our rap reports, and our cafeteria services reports, just to get an idea of where we stand. This time of year, the work orders do spike right before the start of the school year. So it's not unusual to see a lower completion percentage. That gets sorted out as the school year goes on and things get back to normal. But, you know, start of the school year, especially in a COVID year, it's going to be a little bit more work to do. Financials are, should be in the packet. The second part of the agenda has been looking at capital projects. We're looking at the current projects, which are the communications and the DORA projects. Those are going to be getting started shortly, if not already. The turf project is in progress. I would encourage everybody to go take a look at the field. Looks great. And we've got our fingers crossed, it's going to be a great improvement for our teams and the school community in general. Also, we're looking at putting the bids out for the HVAC in the cafeteria and gym, depending on how it's being used, over at the high school in the fall for a summer of twenty-two install. We want to get it out there early, try to beat all the other bidders and hopefully get an advantage from the timing of that bid. Other than that, this is to Mr. Krupa's point, we did review of the board docs software. It's a software suite that will hopefully help us become more organized on the board level with all the documentation we have to keep, all the documentation we have to put out to the public. I think it's going to be a big improvement from the way we've been doing things. Nothing against Brian. It's a lot of work. So if we can automate some of it, it's going to help greatly to coordinate and get things out on time. Other than that, we did spend a considerable amount of time going through our facilities assessments. I know the four of us have spent, well, six of us, including Dr. Handerhand and Brian, we've spent a significant amount of time going through and looking at the report that Spiesel gave us. And we're looking forward to trimming it down to something that's a little bit more digestible for everybody in the near future. So that concludes my report. Mr. President, any questions?
No questions? Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So we will move on to public comment on agenda action items. So this portion of the meeting is for public comment on items we will be voting on this evening. So we ask if you are speaking on something, please let us know what the number is as a reference.
This is Betsy Cross. I just put my hand up about ten seconds ago, in case anybody put their hand up first. I just wanted to mention that. I know you mentioned Mr. Gorts has an excused absence tonight, so.
Mrs. Cross, this is for action items. What number are you looking at?
When it's on Zoom, you know, it seems easy to get on. Yes, I am wondering. You're looking to pass tonight a number of stipends. And I think you did the same thing last year, and you were approving the stipends, and then the next week you went down to a half day. I think people would like to see the school open first, and then you start paying out stipends, because I guess those stipends were supposed to be in people's August fifteenth paycheck or something along those lines, or twenty-fifth, or I don't know what. But why don't you get school open first? And then start paying out all these, you know, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in stipends. Will school open on time? I don't know. Will it open on time in Wal? Do you have enough teachers? Do you have enough bus drivers? Do you have enough bus drivers to get to the other schools? If you could go over that tonight? If you can answer that, Mr. Adonizio, I would appreciate it. Mr. Nasser skipped over. You had a July twenty-seventh FNF meeting, but there are no minutes online, and you were talking about a referendum. If you could tell us the dollar amount that you're looking at.
Mrs. Cross, this is for action items. Do you have a comment on items we will be voting on this evening?
Well, you have it's attached to your agenda. That's why I'm bringing it up. I see additional class compensation. I know Erin Radwansky does a great job. She's getting additional compensation of nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then there's four names underneath. June, Victoria June, Sarah Infanera, Frank Salero, Christine Osborne. Could you tell me what they're doing for that additional compensation? You don't say if it's an additional, oh, it says here, additional class periods. So how many were they doing before? I don't know. I just kind of want to get a better handle on that. I know, I know the music teacher is fabulous. Is it an extra ten thousand for every extra period? I don't know. Mr. Adonizio, you mentioned tonight. That's going to see it on the agenda. You mentioned that Brian Clayton was doing the Zoom call, but I recall back on an old.
Mrs. Cross, that is not on the agenda this evening.
Yeah, I'm wondering who's doing your Zoom.
Mrs. Cross, that is not on the agenda. Do you have, do you have a comment on agenda items? That's what it is. If not, then we will move on to the next person.
Ryan Clayton is on sick leave.
Hey, Ralph.
Yes.
Just to, I, I, I just wanted, of all the points that Miss Cross made, I just do want to ask Dr. Handerhand, the, the, the one that did have some validity was the, you know, the, the staff and enough teachers and bus drivers, and just to, to make sure that the community knows and that you can give them confidence that we are fully ready and willing to open on Thursday with all the necessary items that we need to, to affect the district.
Yes, Mr. Hall, I will, I am proud to say that we are welcoming the faculty back to, back to school tomorrow. We have a really great day planned for, for our staff's return in all of the, all of the schools. And we welcome the students this Thursday, September second, and we're really excited to see them. So we had a staff that worked really hard this summer. I am very impressed and proud of all that they were able to accomplish during what seemed to be a summer that flew by. But while township schools are excited to open on time this week, and we are actually the early, I believe, I was told that we were the earliest school in Monmouth County to be opening this summer, this, this fall.
Mr. President, if I can clarify with regard to stipends, the approval, whether it be the sidebar or the award of stipends to employees in the district, is not authorizing the payment, but it's the award of the stipend. There is a process that needs to be followed, including the completion of the work associated with the stipend before payment for a stipend is issued.
Thank you, Mr. Flan.
Mr. President, can I also just address the dollar amount of the referendum? We don't have an exact amount yet. We are looking at a very long list that we're trying to whittle down. This is going to be needs-based. This is why it's important for us to get out in the schools and do a firsthand investigation on what is really needed out there. So from a process standpoint, what we're going to do is whittle down. We're going to prioritize, and we're going to get more exact figures, because I know a lot of the numbers that Mrs. Cross likes to cite are pulled directly from that report, which has a very large margin of error. So we need to dial it in a little bit tighter so that we can go out with accurate numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kuna?
Hi, yes, this is Lauren Kuna. Thank you for calling on me. This is in reference to item number sixteen G. I had a question or wanted clarification on the recommend approval of the settlement agreement between the Board of Ed and WM and CM. And then I also had questions about under item eighteen, letters N, where there's four hundred and twenty-five upgraded Chromebooks that were purchased. If I take that figure and divide it into four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, that's one thousand thirty-three dollars per Chromebook. I know when I go to Costco, they're around two fifty, so it just seems an exorbitant amount of money. O has sixty laptops at sixty-one thousand. I know they're a little bit more, but that's about a thousand per laptop. And then the desktops turned into about eight hundred eighty-one dollars per. So what jumps out to me as a taxpayer is the Chromebook. That just seems like a really large figure, and I'd like to understand about the negotiation process and the purchasing power. I would think we would get a better price. That's a, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for agenda items? Seeing none, we will close the public comment for agenda items. Dr. Handerhand, do you, can you talk to the, the Chromebooks? Because they're just not
Yes, I can.
regular average everyday.
Absolutely. The, the Chromebooks that were purchased, that, well, that are on the agenda for this evening is they're enterprise-grade Chromebooks, which mean they are not at all the Chromebooks that can be purchased for two hundred and fifty dollars. These are Chromebooks, these Chromebooks are for our teachers so that they can expand the instructional technology in their classes. The capability of, and the versatility of these machines is, is far superior to a, a standard standard Chromebook. And additionally, we had samples of laptops and enterprise Chromebooks for our staff throughout, through K-12 to experiment and use in the classroom to really get a sense of what type of machine that, that they would prefer to work with. And the enterprise Chromebook provided the most seamless applications of instructional technology by our staff. So that is, the cost is, is far greater than the standard Chromebook.
And
For our staff, throughout, through K-12, to
And Dr. Handerhand, how about the, you talked about the laptops, and in regards to the settlement, that is something that we cannot comment on, correct?
That's correct. Ms. Cornell, would you like to?
That's correct, Mr. Adonizio. It's a confidential matter. That's exempt from public discussion.
Okay. All right. And are and desktop computers are considerably cheaper now than laptops? Correct?
Yes.
Okay. That was N, O, and P. Okay, we got that all squared away. All right. Okay, so let's get back on track. Yes, Mr. Krupa.
I don't know if we should have mentioned this in board updates earlier. But I just want to mention that there was a meeting between the Princeton Knight Foundation, Dr. Handerhand and some of the board members as representatives of the larger group some weeks ago, where we were continuing to talk about that relationship and what the partnership could look like and some of their projects that they were looking at for the future. And I just want to mention that as a part of a board update, if you will, that I missed before, so I apologize.
No, thank you. And, you know, that's a foundation that the district is continuing to work with because they are a recognized foundation by the district. And they, they have grown quite a bit. They've taken on, just so everybody knows, they've taken on a lot of new members. There's a lot of excitement. And we had a good meeting with them, and I think they're going to do some great things in the future. So uh, I think they're going to do, uh, some great things in the future. So, uh, they, they have a, they, they really want to be involved. So, so that's a good thing. And we're going to continue talking and working with them moving forward. Um, okay, number fourteen, approval of the secretary minutes. Could I have a motion for the executive session of July thirteenth? Uh, special meeting July thirteenth, the executive session of July twentieth, the business meeting of July twentieth, and the special meeting of July twenty-ninth, all of two thousand twenty-one. Can I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. Wondrack. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Sam Filippo. Any discussion? No, Mr. Smythe, roll call please.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
She's hot in it.
Yes.
Mr. Groupa?
Yes.
Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sam Filippo?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
And Mr. Adeniz.
Yes. Number fifteen, policy, um, recommended approval after the public hearing of following policies. Oh, one, three, one, one, six, four, nine, three, one, four, two, regulation three, one, four, two, three, three, five, one, four, one, four, six, regulation four, one, four, six, five, four, six, oh, point, oh, two, and regulation five, four, six, oh, point, oh, two. Um, could I have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Uh, motion, Mr. Hall, second, Ms. Hodnitt. Okay, now open it up for public hearing. Any comments on these policies? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Uh, Mr. Smythe, roll call.
Yes, um, Ms. Hodnitt.
Yes.
Mr. Groupa?
Yeah.
Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sam Filippo?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Adeniz.
Yes. Uh, B, could I have a motion for five, one, one, one for second reading?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. Wondrack, second. Second, Mr. Hall, uh, open it up for a public hearing on five, one, one, one. Seeing nobody, you've closed the public hearing. Uh, Mr. Smythe, roll call please.
Mr. Groupa?
Yes.
Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sam Filippo?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hodnitt?
Yes.
And Mr. Adeniz.
Yes. Number sixteen, could I have a motions, uh, a motion on letter A through G?
I'll make the motion.
Uh, a motion by Ms. Stites, second by Mrs. Hodnitt. Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, uh, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Groupa.
I want to mention, uh, I know we discussed this at a public meeting.
Mr. Groupa, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm not able to hear you.
And I think he might be frozen. Oh, there he is.
Can you hear me now? How about now? I don't know what.
It's, it's, it's very, very low. Maybe kind of yell into it a little bit.
Alrighty, let's see. How about now?
A little better.
All right, well, uh, I'll pass to cut it.
Well, can, can I piggyback off of Mr. Groupa's question?
Sure.
Uh, this is, uh, items A through G, including the substitute pay, correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, the substitute teacher pay at a hundred dollars per day is, how is that comparing to other districts right now?
Um, Mr. Nasser, uh, we are currently compiling, uh, this information and we will be discussing it in committee because, um, you know, because we're starting the school year, we need to have, um, an established, um, rate per day at this moment. But, uh, we are currently doing a lot of fact finding for many positions, uh, to, to, um, see where Wall Township lines up with other, um, neighboring school districts and school districts throughout Monmouth County and Northern Ocean.
Okay, thank you. Is that, uh, the same for the other positions as well?
Yes, it is.
Especially the drivers?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so more info coming, but this will get us off the ground.
Yes, it'll kind of get us started. Anybody else? Any questions, comments? We've seen none. Mr. Smythe, roll call please.
Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sam Filippo?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hodnitt?
Yes.
Groupa?
Yeah.
And Mr. Adeniz.
Yes, thank you. Uh, seventeen, superintendent's report, Dr. Handerhand.
You're muted.
Thank you. I'm a little rusty in the virtual world. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Uh, I would like to request a motion to approve item seventeen A, with the exception of the second employee listed under Roman numeral five.
Seventeen, sorry, seventeen A through double A, correct?
Um, that would, well.
Are you just?
I'm just, we're, I'm parsing it out. Yep, I'm parsing it out.
Okay. Can we have a, can we have a motion on A?
The whole.
No, just, just.
So just, this is just seventeen A, with the exception of the second employee listed under Roman numeral five. B through double A, I'll address in a second, um, second ask.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mrs. Hodnitt, se- uh, second by Mrs. Stites. Any questions, discussion on it? Seeing none, Mr. Smythe, roll call please.
Mr. Sam Filippo?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hodnitt?
Yes.
Mr. Groupa?
Uh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Adeniz.
Yes.
Okay, I would like to request a motion to approve by consent agenda, items B through double A.
We have a motion on that.
I'll make.
I'll make the motion.
Motion, Mr. Nazar, could a second by Mrs. Stites? Any questions, discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Um, Dr. Hanahan, I'm not, a number, uh, uh, N, recommend approval of the Wall Township, uh, course offerings. Um, I, I went through that, those course offers. I was just, you know, um, interested in hearing whether or not that course offerings has been, um, changed or evaluated based on the number of students in, in, in each of the classes over the last couple of years. And if, if there's a timely, uh, review of which classes are, uh, you know, uh, you know, taken out and, and, and construct, you know, constructed differently or, or just abolished or you just talk moments just quickly about how that process works. Is that something that you do on a, every other year, every year? Is it, you, do you do it? The, the, the principal do it? The system, super curriculum? Just, you know, anything?
The process?
Yeah.
Okay, the process. Well, um, so this year, um, I, I can, last year obviously was my first year and, um, we, I, we, since I've been superintendent, we retitled courses. Um, some courses, uh, certainly at the secondary level, um, ha- some, um, have not run due to, uh, you know, lack of student interest, lack of registrations. Uh, that is reviewed. It's reviewed, uh, typically in, in-house. Um, I can tell you moving forward, uh, you know, I'm, I'm certainly looking forward to, uh, a, a more typical school year. And, uh, what typically happens is, uh, the superintendent meets with the administrators in the respective schools that offer electives of choice, for example. And, uh, we look at class, we look at trends. We look at class trends and enrollments over a couple of years. And we see if something is trending up. We see if something is trending down. Um, we also, uh, at that time, consider class size. Uh, oftentimes, uh, course ideas, uh, bubble up from, uh, faculty, from, uh, some of the supervisors. Students start showing an interest and, uh, sometimes interests, uh, they, uh, they wax and wane. Uh, so, uh, we do have to be, uh, responsive to the needs of the students. So there's absolutely a process of, the course offerings are truly part of a five-year curriculum cycle. And when we review the content area, we also look at the, um, elective programming. So, uh, it's, there's a systemic approach to it. There's an enrollment approach to it, but there's also, uh, contemporaneous because we do want to meet the needs of the students. Um, and, um, so I, I, whole, I so look forward to looking into some curriculum items this school year. So I'm very much looking forward to that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Mr. Groupa?
Yes. Um, I'm, you know, I'm, Joe, I'm glad you brought that up. I'm just, um, wondering if maybe for this next go around, uh, school year, um, that this might be something that we can include as a discussion item. That as well as the, uh, textbook list at the curriculum committee meeting.
Yeah, sure.
I think that would be an important function of that committee.
Of course.
And we could include that in the report so that members like Joe would know that that was something which we are continually looking at.
Absolutely.
That same concern.
Absolutely.
And anybody else? Seeing none, Mr. Smythe, roll call please.
Ms. Stites?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hodnitt?
Yes.
Mr. Groupa?
Yes.
Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sam Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Adeniz.
Yes. Number eighteen, business office, Mr. Smythe.
Uh, yes, I'd ask for a, uh, motion for consent agenda on items eighteen A through P.
We have a motion on that.
I'll make the motion.
Motion, Mr. Hall, could I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Nazar. Any questions, discussion?
Uh, one thing I, uh, will point out, uh, in response to the public comment with regard to the purchasing, I know Dr. Handerhand, um, you know, described the, the difference in the items being purchased. However, with regard to, uh, the method of purchasing, these are being purchased through a cooperative purchasing agreement, uh, and the contract is listed as ESCNJ. That's the Education Services, uh, uh, Commission of New Jersey, and that's a, uh, a cooperative that allows other public entities, including school district, to purchase off of their contract. So they put a number of items out to public bid, uh, and other public school districts that are, uh, participating in their cooperative, which the board passes a resolution prior to the school year to participate, and we are permitted to make purchases off of that cooperative contract. So this was competitively bid, but it was not competitively bid by our district. It was, uh, bid by, uh, the ESCNJ cooperative.
So, Mr. Smythe, it, there, there would be a cost savings then, uh, compared to just going out to, uh, get the, the market price, correct?
Uh, well, that's the idea of going out to bid, whether it be the district or the cooperative. Uh, however, uh, this is required to be bid based on the value of the purchase because we're exceeding the bid threshold of forty thousand dollars. Um, it's required to be put out to bid or purchase under a cooperative, which again is, uh, the same as a bid, just bid by another public entity. And because it exceeds the bid threshold, it's required to be approved, uh, by the Board of Education at a public meeting.
So we have motion in a second. There is no discussion. Mr. Smythe, roll call please.
Uh, Mr. Wondrack? Should be spacebar.
You're still muted, Mr. Wondrack. There you go.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hodnitt?
Yes.
Mr. Groupa? Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sam Filippo?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes.
Mr. Adeniz.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This time we will move on to public comment on any school district issue. Um, please state your name and your town for the record, please. Good evening, uh, caller on the phone.
Oh, yeah. Hi, Ernest McNolli. I'm a recent Monmouth County resident for seventy-two years. And I now live in, uh, Florida. I live at seven, ten, northeast, seventh street, Pointon Beach, Florida. My name is Ernest McNolli.
Okay. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. So I've always had a lot of interest in Monmouth County schools and education, and I spent a lot of years in education myself. And one of the concerns I have about, um, wall schools and wall district, et cetera, et cetera, aside from what's going on with COVID and all the political issues, is, um, the actual demogra- not the demographics, the, the, the EPA, understanding and configuration of wall. Uh, I, uh, I'm, I'm trying to recall. I think you're, uh, how many square miles is wall?
Thirty-two.
Okay, and I think you have a, a population of less than half of that, right?
Uh, no, I, what I'm, what are, what are you trying to get at, sir?
Okay, I'm trying to get at the fact that a lot of wall children and students are either in schools or near property or allowed to go and play in a lot of areas of wall that have been declared superfund sites. And for example, there's a, uh, I, 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 I was looking that up and it said that, for example, most of the water and fish caught near wall, like the Shark River and some of your lakes and stuff, you're not really supposed to eat any of that, which, that's not my concern. My concern is, uh, I get a lot of reports that there's a lot of wall students going in these abandoned factory lots that are superfund sites. They're building like biking and, uh, dirt bike ramps. And they're splashing in this water that is so toxic. And I'm just wondering why, like, the school system doesn't get all the data of the, of the layout of wall, how many things are polluted and how many areas? And somehow instruct the, the superintendent to instruct the principals, to instruct, and the teachers and maybe the school nurses to say, you know, don't go in these areas. And, and that's my comment. I, 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 a- a- and the fact which I don't understand, you, wall has so many law enforcement residents. I mean prosecutors and assemblymen and that, et cetera, et cetera. And everybody knows about the horrible pollution problem there, uh, you know, with dry cleaners and this business and that business and factories and a- a- and they're still around. And, and yet there's, there's kids and students splashing in the water and playing. Uh, I, I, I just think the school board should have some kind of meaning, meaningful meeting with, with the superintendent and the principals and come up with a plan to explain to the schools, both the nurse and the principal in the schools, to somehow figure out a way to explain to parents and students the layout of superfund sites active in wall. Uh, it's concerning, uh, for adults too, but certainly for children and, 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 and students first, since this is a school board meeting. So that's my, uh, that's my concern and comment. And I would hope that, uh, maybe on your Facebook page, I could see that you understood my comment and maybe make some comments relative to the current superfund site, the EPA status in, i- in the square miles of wall and the surrounding waters. And, and probably the lack of teaching and knowledge of, of the students and parents to beware of certain places. That, that, that's basically my point. Uh, I mean, is that understandable or yes or no?
No, I, I understand what you're, what you're saying, but I, I, I can tell you, um, that the particular, the, the couple superfund sites that you are probably speaking about do have fences up around. the particular, the, the couple superfund sites that you are probably speaking about do have fences up around them um, and, uh, have been remediated, uh, but tha- that's more of a enforcement issue for our local police department if kids are trespassing on superfund sites.
I, I agree with you, I, I agree, are you, are you the board president or the board lawyer or something?
I, I'm the board president, sir.
Okay, so you're not also the superintendent, oh, no, I don't, can?
No.
Can the super, oh, okay.
No, no, so, I mean, so, so what I can do is that we will, because we have regular conversations with our local police, we can let them know that, um, someone did call in and, uh, inform us that they believe that students might be trespassing on superfund sites with bike riding and different things and ask them to pay attention to that.
That would be excellent, and the one in particular I'm talking about, I'm not sure where it is in wall, but it's, it's a, it's a lake or something, uh, Wright Lake or, they, they built a, uh, a bicycle and a and a, uh, a motor scooter ramp and the kids and students ride the ramp and then they splash in the polluted water. So if you could find out where that ramp is and make sure that that's refenced in, because I understand it's a pretty popular site.
Okay. I will, uh, I will pass that along to the, our chief.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, have a good evening.
You're, you too.
Second. To.
It's me, Mr. President.
A good evening, I have to promote you to a panelist because you have an older version of Zoom.
Thank you, uh, I just have a point of clarity, are we timing public comment?
Yes, I, um, went over by, uh, ten seconds. I wasn't paying attention to it.
No worries, I was just asking, thank you.
Ms. Nowalski? You there?
Yes, hi Ralph, thank you, how are you?
Good, good, good evening, sorry.
Good evening, hi, everybody. Um, of course, I want to discuss the, uh, last week. I wanted the public, whoever is ha- uh, happening to be watching this meeting, uh, to maybe understand, I asked Dr. Henderhand through an email to explain what happened at the last meeting, because I think it is, uh, a little, um, confusing for the public to know that, um, masks were not told to be worn, um, when we walked in by the security guard as they have been in the past. Um, the poor security guard let everybody in and actually told me, uh, we recommend a mask, and that's different than requiring one. So I think that's why, uh, over sixty-seven parents walked into the cafeteria. Um, was because there was no communication on that you could not come into the cafeteria for the board meeting with a mask, without a mask on. And I think it maybe could have been clarified a little bit by Dr. Henderhand when she came out uh, with the lawyer who nobody knew who this lady was, I'm apologize, I never met her either, she wasn't introduced and I think that there was a lot of confusion there and maybe it could have been communicated in a better way that everybody knows that this wasn't a bunch of parents that knocked down the door and refused to wear a mask. They were led into a school building without a mask. And if this mandate is so strong by the board, then this should have been communicated that we weren't allowed in with a mask. And, um, also be clarified that we were allowed in for the August eleventh meeting without a mask and the EO was put in progress on August ninth. Regardless of two fifty-three, has nothing to do with it. The EO was August ninth, the mask required at the August eleventh meeting. So I think that needs to be out in the public for anyone watching now to know that the parents were not wrong, the Board of Ed and the super were wrong with the communication of the school. I understand that there's nothing we can do with, uh, Murphy's, uh, mandate, he's got a stronghold on all the schools no matter what, I think that the parents just wanted to see a little bit more push by wall. Um, that's the letter you sent, you acted like you wanted to make a better push. The board seemed on board, Dr. Henderhand seemed on board and it kind of just seemed like everything died and, um, hopefully, moving forward, when things like this arise, the board will be a little bit stronger. Maybe do a little bit more to show the public that they have our backs or that they want to work with us, because right now it looks like you versus us. And, um, you know, I don't know how much parents can go up there and spill their hearts out and have, uh, board members roll their eyes at them left and right, when some of these people don't even want to come speak but they love their kids so much and this is the only place that they have a forum. And when you have other peers that are voted on a board that are concerning for your kids and they're rolling their eyes, whether you disagree with us or not, or whether you think we shouldn't yell out or not, um, the respect needs to go both ways and, um, the last couple meetings, the disrespect by everybody is, um, is disheartening and it's going to show on our kids. And I think we all should work for our kids and I think leadership starts with you guys. And Dr. Henderhand should have stood up at that meeting instead of walking out saying, I can't do this, calling wall police who did nothing, should have stood up and said, let's work together, I know you all want to speak, we shouldn't have let you in without a mask, but let's figure out a way to work at it and maybe you guys would have had a meeting. So again, I've talked to Ralph about this, I think communication with the wall Board of Ed has been bad for years and no one's changed it and it's just as bad moving forward with a new superintendent. So maybe you guys can all figure out a way, have a, a town hall meeting, get together and work better communication with the parents of Wall Township. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Yeah, hi, Mr. Adnizio, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. This is Rick Iraeze, Allenwood, New Jersey. Uh, first, I, I wanted to thank you, Mr. Adnizio, the Dr. Henderhand, members of the board. Um, I want to thank you for all you're doing, uh, during a global pandemic. Uh, you, you've done a great job to ensure the teacher and student safety. And, and I personally, you know what, I want to apologize uh, for the attacks on this board and the attacks on the board members and lack of respect. Um, Dr. Henderhand, I apologize to you, it's, it's hard when you're being attacked by, by so many to try to be positive and stay positive. And, and that's what we need to do here. I know that, that I want you to know, right, that many people are in support of your actions and all that you're doing. Right, I, I wish more people would join to show their support. I've had children that have gone through this school that have turned out to be amazing young ladies that have, have great careers and great families. That's all thanks to board members like yourself and our teachers and our students and our faculty and staff. And I just wanted to say thank you again and I wish all the teachers, the administrators, the students and staff a great year. Keep, keep your heads high, you're doing well and, and many people in this town support you, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Okay. Seeing nobody else for public comment, we will close public comment. Any board members have anything?
Is it just for comments?
Yes, you have anything?
I just wanted to thank all the teachers that volunteered their time this summer to get trained in Orton-Gillingham um, and multi-sensory reading, I think it's going to be a very exciting development for wall and I'm really excited to see how it supports our readers, especially in the early grades, so I know that they gave up their time and I, I hope they walked away feeling like it was a great use of their time and I'm excited to see it in the schools.
Anybody else have anything? Up, go ahead, Mr. Sam Flippo.
I just wanted to wish everybody a great school year, um, it's exciting to have everybody back. Um, and I, I think it's going to be a fantastic year, um, I know, uh, my kids are very much looking forward um, to going to school and being there all day. Um, uh, and, um, and having, um, a little bit more, uh, normalcy. Um, and, uh, and I just wanted to thank all of the, the teachers and the administrators um, and, um, and our superintendent and our board and everybody for, um, sort of moving and shaking and, um, shimmying and going all over the place with, with, with everything that's, you know, been laid out here. Um, and I'm just looking forward for a positive year. Um, and, uh, I just want to say that, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? So, the, the one thing I want to say is, um, that to, to everybody watching and listening, that we as a board, we, we feel all the parents frustration and, and I said it last week after the meeting that and, and I've said it multiple times, that um, you, you see a problem that you don't like, in, in this case, many people, it's, they don't want masks. Um, and you come to the Board of Education because it's in the school and you can get in front of us and you uh, want us to change something that unfortunately we can't change, we happen to live in a state that has, uh, I believe it's the strongest governorship in the entire country. That's how much power the governor of the state of New Jersey has. Um, we hear everybody, I can tell you, um, just from my few minutes at the meeting last week, uh, in, in, in being in executive session and, and I, I was crawling out of my skin with a mask on my face, to be honest, uh, you know. I got vaccinated, that was a choice I made back in February last year um, because it was get vaccinated and things go back to normal and I did that. Um, and it took a long time for things to kind of go back to normal and now we feel like we're going in another direction and I personally am not happy with that. Um, the one thing I did say to everybody that I believe is very important is that boards of educations, superintendents, your, uh, local municipal officials uh, can't really change anything, it's got to go to the state legislators, your assemblymen, assemblywomen. Those are the people that can make change when it comes to laws. Uh, just so everybody knows, and I mentioned it last week to some people, the governor has to go back before the legislators uh, in September, I believe, to, uh, ask for a ninety-day extension to his executive order powers, uh, when they run out in January. So if you feel strongly about it, I suggest you reach out to them, our assemblymen here in wall uh, also to assemblymen and women throughout the state, because they need to hear from everybody if you want to facilitate any kind of change. That's the way to do it legally. Um, unfortunately, we, we can't sit, even if all nine board members here wanted, uh, no masks in school at the end of the day, it wouldn't matter because the superintendent runs the school district. That's their job in every district in the state of New Jersey and they have to follow the law as we do, because we took a constitutional oath to it. So, don't think for one second we don't hear everybody, don't think for one second that we're not frustrated by everything that goes on. Um, you know, if we had home rule that we wrote to the governor about uh, last meeting, masks could have been optional and we could have had the meeting. Uh, so I just want everybody to know that and if you have any questions about it feel free to reach out to me and I'd be happy to talk to you about it. Um, with that, uh, can we have a mo- and I, again, I'd like to wish all our teachers and students, uh, the best this year. Um, first day of school, full day of school since March of two thousand nineteen. Uh, I, the, the excitement that some of these kids are probably having right now is probably off the charts, uh, to, to get back in and, and you know, see their friends and get things going, so I, I, I'm so happy they're going back and, um, we're going to work real hard to make sure school stays open, um, full-time through the whole year and not have any setbacks. So, Dr. Henderhand, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Um, just that I hope everyone like yourself, uh, just wishes of the happiest, um, and most productive and exciting school years.
Great. All right, with that, uh, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Most from Mr. Sam Flippo, could I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Nazar, all in favor? Everybody?
Right.
All right. Thank you, everyone, have a good evening. Um, and good luck to our football team Friday night at Rutgers, let's hopefully, uh, go for another, uh, state.
Sunday.
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 Sorry. Sorry, thinking Friday night football, but it's Sunday night football this week. I will be there. Good night, everyone, take care.